Good evening. My name is Mary Condon from the League of Women Voters. For roughly fifty years, the League of Women Voters of Willmet has worked with eighth-grade students throughout Willmet to provide the opportunity to learn about the workings of local government. Students have worked closely with representatives of the Village of Willmet, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and all Village staff to understand firsthand how they function these past few months. Tonight, students from Willmet Junior High will conduct a mock meeting of the Willmet Village Board of Trustees. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Willmet, we would like to thank all of the Village Board trustees and staff, especially Alex Artehenya, and most especially the backbone of this program at WJHS, Erin Schwartz and Eric Rieses. This group's collective participation and collaboration is what makes the League Student and Government Leaders Program possible. And with that, here are the students to have their mock meeting.
Good evening. I hereby call this or to order this regular meeting of the Willmet Village Board for Thursday, March 5th, 2020. We will now take roll call. Trustee Hatton?
Here.
Trustee Stumpf?
Here.
Trustee Moran?
Present.
Trustee McGrath?
Here.
Trustee North?
Here.
Norton, excuse me. We have reached the quorum, so we continue our meeting as normal. It is now time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start tonight with the approval of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on February 11th, 2020?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. This is now open to discussions. Does anyone have anything to say? No? Okay. Let's hold this to a vote. Say aye if you approve, nay if you disapprove of the approval of the consent agenda. Trustee Hatton?
Nay.
Trust- trusty Stumpf?
Aye.
Trustee Moran?
Aye.
Trustee Norton?
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
And aye. Perfect. The motion of the consent agenda has passed in a five-to-one vote. Moving on, we now have the reports and proposals of the Village Officers. Let us start with the Community Development Manager's proposal. Mr. Community Development Manager, will you please step up to the podium and pitch your proposal?
Good evening. My name is Miles Friedman. As you know, I'm the Director of Community Development. Tonight, I am before you to advocate that the board includes in the budget $175,000 for hiring a professional planner to prepare and update the 1990 comprehension comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a critically important tool in planning all aspects of the Village's future. It helps the Village to achieve its goals. It is essential to any community's long-term growth. Our current comprehensive plan has not been properly updated since 1990. Under Illinois law, it is required to be updated every ten years. Instead of making the revision our community needs, for the last thirty years, the Village has only provided one staff update and one addition to the plan. But we have not done a comprehensive rewrite, and now is the time. We have avoided putting in place a solid plan for the future in thirty years. It is amazing that we have come this far, operating on a plan from 1990, and it is not worth the risk to try to go ten more years without a proper plan. When you think about how much has changed since 1990, it is clear that the current plan we are operating under is completely ineffective. With the world rapidly changing, Willmet needs to change with it. The plan from 1990 has no mention of environmental initiatives, transportation issues, economic development, roads, sewers, water pipes, health and wellness programs, and cultural and social activities. These elements of the plan may not have been needed in 1990, but today, they are essential to everyday life. $175,000 is a lot of money, but every dollar is definitely warranted. Keep in mind that 170- that $175,000 is a ten-year investment. In other words, we are paying $17,500 a year, which is actually less than every other program you are asked to be- you are being asked to fund today. We need a plan for the next twenty to thirty years. The time is now for you to stop putting off this much-needed program and fund the comprehensive plan. Our community needs a clear strategy and goals to reach. When you take into account that the plan, on a yearly basis, isn't even that expensive, it is obvious that by funding this plan, the Village will receive a very positive return on their investment. I hope you will approve this important plan.
Okay. Trustees, this is now open to questions to our Community Development Manager. Do we have any questions?
Sure. Why is it necessary to update the plan this year instead of in the future?
Because routinely, it's supposed to be updated every ten years. And for the last thirty years, we haven't done proper updates. We've only done small updates, so you could say that you didn't update, basically. But this year, it's like everything's changing so rapidly, and we weren't even supposed to go thirty years without a rewrite of this plan. And to go ten more is just way too risky to not do it now.
What does this comprehensive plan focus on?
The new comprehensive plan will rewrite all the issues from the old comprehensive plan and focus on important new issues that I have previously stated, like environmental initiatives, transportation issues, economic developments, roads, sewers, water pipes, health and wellness programs, and cultural and social activities.
Trustees, any more questions? Nope? Perfect. That's all for now, Mr. Community Development Manager.
Thank you.
You may have a seat. Moving on, could we next have the Police Chief come forward and give his proposal?
Hello, Bo- hello, Board. My name is Henry Bach, and I'm here to propose two investments that will help the Police Department and make Willmet safer. The first piece of technology is it's a server for an in-car camera system, and this costs $20,000 with a $200 maintenance fee every month. This would- this server uses wireless hotspots at the- behind the station to collect, store, and preserve video from inside each marked police car- police vehicle, excuse me. With each vehicle having this camera system, data can be saved and used in many ways. It can be used by prosecutors or defense in criminal cases to review an officer's performance while on duty and for defending the actions of said officers. The robot burner can create discs and burn the footage onto discs for showing the video for legal cases. The server spent a month out of service in twenty- in 2011 due to a critical software failure, and the maintenance for the current system expires in 2023. Secondly, the second piece of technology is-
Mr. Police Chief, can we ask questions on your in-car camera system first?
Oh, yes. Yes, sorry.
Perfect. Trustees, do we have any questions about the in-car camera system?
Are there any immediate benefits to updating this now instead of when it expires at 2023?
Well, we had- our current system has already broken- has already failed once, so I believe it would be good to update it, and we've waited eight years. So we- I think we should up- it would be good to update it now.
Any more questions, trustees?
What advantages would the new system have over the current system?
See here. It says in 2011, the replacement of the camera DVRs was removed. And now, so they're requested to be as needed, and yeah. So I think it'll just be more efficient.
Trustee Norton, would you like to add something?
Are there gonna be cameras in every single police car?
Just marked- just marked vehicles.
Perfect. I think that's all for the in-car camera systems.
Yes. Now, on to the second piece of technology. It is an upgrade for a- it's a next-generation 911 network. This costs $24,000, and there is no maintenance fee. Wait. Yeah, there's no maintenance fee. Sorry. Wait. I messed up earlier. The in-car camera system does not have a maintenance fee. This has the two hundred- the $2,000 per month maintenance fee. Excuse me, let me continue. Currently, the network being used- the 911 network being used is unable to locate wireless and voice calls, as well as it is unable to receive texts and video. A new nationwide network is already being developed, and this is also a state-mandated project. And the state of Illinois has hired a consultant for a statewide emergency services information network. This pro- this system will provide fast and secure connection to carry 911 calls and data. And the Village recently purchased a third-party software with texting capabilities. However, this will- this is not as efficient as the new network because the system can only communicate with the resident. The resident cannot commu- the caller cannot communicate with the system. This will allow for faster and more efficient calls and responses between the 911 operator and the caller. These two pieces of equipment would be great purchases for the Village of Willmet as they will ensure safety for both officers and residents, and the police force will be made more efficient.
Perfect. Trustees, any questions?
What benefits will this give from the- these cam- or these- or this from the older system?
Well, the older system can- it can only- let me find this. It can- let me find it. Excuse me. Okay. The system can only communicate with the res- so it would allow for more efficient calls between the caller, and they- the caller would be able to know it's the location from the- where they're calling from. And the old piece of- the old piece of equipment, it can- it can only communicate with the caller. The operator can communicate with the caller. The caller cannot communicate with the operator in terms of their location and like who is calling, where they're calling from, and like it can't update the location.
Would you happen to know how many police calls and 911 calls we receive every year?
I do not in Willmet. I don't currently have the data. I believe it is somewhere- I believe it's in the 10,000s, 20- 10 to 20,000, I believe.
And would you happen to know how well the old server was handling those calls?
I do- I do not. But as I said, it was unable to locate wireless calls, so it wouldn't be as efficient as the new one, and it couldn't receive texts and video.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Police Chief. You can take a seat now, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have the Engineering and Public Works Director giving another community development proposal.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Gable, and I'm the Engineering and Public Works Director for the Village of Willmet. So the first project I'm proposing are permanent sanitary flow meters. So these will record and measure wet weather flows to determine the impact of the Village's inflow and infiltration removal program, which began in 2012. This will also help to track the future inflow and infiltration removal progress. This will cost $25,000 a year to inspect, troubleshoot, and maintain the meters, plus write an annual report. For those of you who are unaware, the inflow and infiltration removal program was when the Village took initiative to make improvements to the sanitation of the sewer system. They especially focused on the reduction of groundwater getting into sanitation pipes. To purchase these meters, it would cost $64,000, and as I mentioned previously, $25,000 every year after that.
This is open to discussing- or questions from our trustees. Trustees?
Why is this project urgent and cannot wait for future years?
It can wait for more- for the years ahead. However, to track how effective the program that was started in 2012, to track how efficient that has been, and if we would like to continue this project, it's necessary to measure what water is in our pipes because we cannot do that right now.
Currently, we have- or just to understand, we have no tracking system, correct?
That I'm- that I- that I'm aware of, yes.
Trustees, any more comments or questions?
So is our current system efficient at all?
We don't have a system that tracks the water in the pipes right now.
Wonderful. You can move on to your next proposal.
My second proposal is RRFBs at the Plaza de Lago pedestrian crossing. So in 2014, the Village received a petition to improve safety for pedestrians at this location. A crosswalk was installed, but complaints have since asked for a system that would encourage driver compliance. And we cannot put in a traffic light at this location, but there has been an indication that a rapid-reflecting flashing beacon or an RRFB would be feasible for this location. It would cost $30,000 to purchase this device, and there would be no maintenance fee or no annual fee because it is solar-powered.
I'll start the questions off. Has there so far been any accidents occurring at this location?
Not that I'm aware of, but there have been many close calls at this location.
How much like car traffic is there every day? Is it enough, obviously, that there would be much risk of accident?
So yes, this is located on Sheridan Road, so it is one of the busiest streets in Willmet. And with three or four apartment buildings being right across the street from Plaza de Lago, many find it inconvenient to go down farther to get to a traffic light with the crosswalk. So they try to cross at this crosswalk, but many drivers don't stop for them.
Is there any information about how many pedestrians cross every day?
There is not.
Where is the nearest crosswalk that?
It would be just a little bit farther down Sheridan Road, but for those who live at the farther apartment building, it is a bit of a walk for them.
Trustees, any more questions? Okay, you can move on to your next proposal.
My final project is the electric vehicle charging station. So this can be wall or pedestal-mounted. It can charge up to two cars at a time, and it will have retractable cables, which will prevent injuries to those using the station, and it will prevent damage to the station itself. This would also be accessible to the public 24 hours a day, and charging times would range anywhere from 30 minutes to a full day, depending on the vehicle and how much of a charge it needs. In addition, this would attract customers to local businesses, which we would- which we would gain revenue off of in addition to the cost that people would pay for the charge with the station. This would cost the Village $250 a year in maintenance, and to purchase this station, it would cost $18,000.
And what's the charge for a charger of a car?
It would- the price be?
Yeah.
It would be set by the Village.
Okay. Trustees, time for questions. Any questions?
Are you only asking for one station, or would you want multiple if possible?
We are only asking for one, but if possible, more than one could work. But this does charge two cars at once, so multiple people could use it at a time.
Are there enough cars in- electric cars in the Willmet area to make this investment equal out?
I believe so, yes. And in addition, the current- the people who do have electric vehicles have to go to neighboring villages, which it hasn't been a huge issue. But to improve their quality of living here in Willmet, it would be easier for them to have a charging station in downtown Willmet.
Can neighboring- will you believe that having a charging station in our own town will help our revenue from other- other villages around us? Do you think they will come in?
I believe it could because with how close we are to Evanston and Glenview and Kennelworth and other places, if this charging station is on their way and they need to stop to purchase something or grab a bite to eat, then they can do so while their vehicle is charging.
Wonderful. Trustees, any more questions?
How long would a charge be?
Depending on how much of a charge the vehicle needs, it could take anywhere from 30 minutes to a full day.
Do you believe that one charging station is enough for the amount of electric cars in Willmet?
I do believe so because I don't think that anyone would let their vehicle get so low that they need the charging station for a full day. So with half an hour, they can go out and do stuff, come back, and then return home or wherever they need to go next.
Okay, if there's no more- thank you very much. If there's no more questions, you may have a seat. Moving on, could we please have our Administration Services Director?
Hello? I'm Cecilia Klobuchar, and I'm the Administrative Services Director, and I have two projects to propose tonight. The first one is the council chambers' audio and visual replacement, and this would cost $80,000. Our current equipment is- was installed and purchased in 2010 and has- it's really old, and it's really hard to find replacement parts for them now because they no longer create the equipment that we need to repair it. And during the past five years, we've had this equipment. We've had to spend $20,000 in repairs for- and new equipment. And this would help our society because it'll be easier for people to like see and hear the broadcasting of our meetings on air and online later. And if we didn't make these repairs now, we could wait and repair them as needed. But once it breaks into like a critical breakdown, then we'd have to broadcast meetings may not be possible. Like broadcasting meetings would no longer be possible until we got the new system.
All right. Are there any questions about the proposal from our trustees?
How many people actually watch the meetings? And is it enough that this would be worth the money?
I don't know, but it varies from meeting to meeting depending on what is being discussed. But it would probably encourage people to watch and tune in to the meetings more.
Even if the quality of the video isn't the best and the audio, wouldn't the viewers still be able to understand what's going on?
They would, but it would be- it would be more- it would be easier to understand and comprehend what's going on when you can actually see and hear. And also, technology from 10 years ago is a lot different than technology now, so it'd be a lot better to have something that's more along like modern to watch.
When the camera systems were replaced or modified or put in 10 years ago, was there a more attract in viewers?
I don't currently know.
Okay.
How hard is it to keep the old system going? Like, how much money does it cost for repairs?
In the past five years, we've spent around approximately $20,000 in repairs.
Will this system help our Village Board and the viewers connect with other entities to help our Village better itself?
I believe so because of also having them online later. Other villages could see what's going on and be able to communicate with Willmet better and be more of like a larger community.
Would it be a necessity to spend our money on this or something that otherwise could help Willmet?
I feel that it's really important to have our meetings be broadcasted better and so people could actually understand. So people could actually hear what people are talking about, so people could form their opinions about what we're talking about here today.
Why is it urgent to replace the system now and not in future time?
As I said before, they currently do not make the parts for our system anymore. So we have to go to places like eBay to find these- the equipment to fix it. So it would be, yeah.
Would it be possible to replace the system if it does like break down? Could we replace the entire system then?
Well, if it was a small repair, we could probably find it on eBay like we did before. But if it critically breaks down, then we'll have to- we may not be poss- we'll possibly not be able to broadcast meetings until we've replaced the system.
So it would- you're saying it would like cause a delay until the next time meetings can be broadcasted?
If we didn't replace it, it would cause a delay until we couldn't broadcast the meetings again.
Wonderful. If there's no more questions, is that your only proposal?
No, I have a second one.
One more? Okay, you may start.
My second proposal is the telephone system repair and replacement, and this would cost $24,500. Currently, our system hasn't been in place for about 10 years, which is the recommended replacement time. And after one year, there would be a $69,100 per maintenance cost per year for the phone system operations. And the cost, the annual decrease in expenses incurred by the Village for the new telephone system is estimated to be $1,200. And if we didn't replace the system, the alternative to this- the alternative is to continue to run the phone system on the unsupported hardware. However, the- a critical piece of the equipment- however, should a critical piece of equipment break down or some- some or all of the Village's non-911 sensor telephone systems would be inoperable. And the company that we have our phones now was purchased by a competitor. So the- the system that we have is no longer operable with that company. And the combined annual cost for the phone system, phone lines, and internet cost is approximately $70,300.
This is now open to questions from our trustees.
Might this replacement increase the number of calls that the Village could undertake?
Most likely, but yeah. It would improve our system, and especially because we've had the system for just about, yeah, a little, yeah, 10 years. And it's no longer- it's no- it's no longer supported hardware.
Will it change the system and make it harder for Willmet citizens?
No, it won't. It would improve systems throughout the Village, and people would be able to- their systems would improve.
And is this new system also not only taking landline calls, but cellular device calls?
I don't know. Wait, one second. I don't know.
Do you know any numbers as to how many calls the current system processes daily or yearly?
I do not know that currently.
If there's no more questions, you may take a seat. And our last proposals are from our Water Management. You may come up and propose.
Hello there, and good afternoon. I'm Eric Lee. I am the Water Management Director for the Village of Willmet. And I've come to speak of the advers- adversities in our water systems that need fixing. To the- we- there are two projects that we need to carry out. One of them is to rebuild our High Lift Pump Number Nine, and another is to clear out wet well, I think, Number Two. These are both vital to our Village- Village's well-being. And so, let's get started. High Lift Pump Nine is a pump that supplies water through the town at all times. The pipes need to be filled with water at all times or else it will violate health code rules and laws, and it's a mess. It also has to be on no matter what. It's pumping millions of gallons of water every single day, the entire year, nonstop. And over time, the infrastructure will deteriorate and need reconstruction. If we don't, consequences will be at hand. The biggest consequence is the pump breaking down. Now, the cost for another one of these is $300,000. And rebuilding the pump, this project, only costs $40,000, which is a measly 13% of the price we need to replace one. Now, this proves that it is absolutely necessary to rebuild the pump Or else uh, the village could be losing an unforgiving two hundred sixty thousand dollars, which is paid by taxpayers. And is a vile waste of their money to uh, to pay for damage that can be prevented. The second consequence is for water to stop moving or move through a number of pipes across town half-full. Now, the problem is that when pipes, uh, when water flows through pipes half-full, uh, metal debris and all these stuffs can like build up. They could build up in the pipes. Um, and, and it could uh, make the water dirty, unsanitary. And it's not clean and safe for our, uh, for our citizens. Um, the probably the biggest problem with this um, wa- uh, water not going through these pipes is that the, the fire department cannot do its job. It doesn't have water to set, to put out the flames of say a, a fire, a house on fire. Now, um, the stopping of water is also a serious sanitation issue like I uh, stated before. Because um, m- metal and debris builds up. And now that clean water is no longer accessible, it's dangerous to drink that water, cause you don't want metal such as lead. Or possibly, well, yeah, lead to go down into your body. Now, this means that a sizable portion of the village will not get access to fresh and safe drinking water, which really reduces our village's safety. Yeah.
Um, alright, if I can start this one off, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the level of um, wellness of these pipes is on a tier ranking. What do you happen to know, the current tier? And the tier when it starts to break down and we have to pay that thirty, or three hundred thousand dollar to rebuild it?
So, uh, there are tiers one through five with um, one being very low risk, five being high risk. Now, conditionally, um, the pipes right now have a uh, tier rating of three. And critic, critic, um, criticality, um, a tier ra- a tier rating of two, which gives it an overall rating of tier two. Don't let that fool you though. Over time, we really do need to, we really do need to rebuild this pump.
And would you happen to know where these pumps are? Are they more for residential purposes or business purposes?
They're for the entire village, businesses, citizens, resi- residency, all those. It's for the village, water all across.
How long over time do you think it will take until the water becomes poisonous with like lead and other metals?
Um, this I believe I don't have the answer to, but it's very dangerous, metal in pipes.
Could we possibly wait a few years before replacing them?
Um, we could wait, no, we can't wait. It's little, um, this, it's literally now or pumps breaking down.
So you said it's likely that if the pumps, pumps are not rebuilt, then the water in citizens' houses will be unsanitary in the near future? Do you know how likely it is that it'll break down in the near future?
How likely? Um, this is a matter of time. Uh, this pump has been up and running for quite a few years. And I'm guessing that's probably gonna break, will uh, break if we don't rebuild it anytime soon.
Alright, well, if there's no other que- questions from any of the trustees, you may move on to your second proposal.
Alright, Wet Well Two is a massive storage tank that stores floodwater. Over the years, sand and dirt builds up from flooding and it goes into the giant tank. And it needs cleaning out. Let's say we have a tank capacity of one hundred gallons, for example. Uh, over four years, thirty-five, um, thirty-five thousand of that one hundred thousand gallons gets filled with sand and we have less capacity to store floodwater. This could lead to frequent street flooding, where there's rain and a massive pain in the backside for homeowners and their basements. Uh, this demonstrates the, uh, why we should clean this tank, because it is beneficial to the sanitation of this village again. And keeps the quality of houses and life secure by ensuring that flooding will not happen anytime soon. Besides, the village cannot push this project back. Um, eventually, it's gonna fill up all the way and flood, floodwater is just gonna end up on the streets. Um, and it's just gonna lower the quality of life if we don't clean it out. If we have a low qual- quality of life, people may start moving out and the town could crumble. Over ti- uh, the sooner, the sooner we complete this project, the less we have to worry about this project. And we could work on other projects to improve this village.
Uh, this is open to questions from our trustees.
When was the tank cleaned last?
Around four to five years ago, I believe.
And I understand flooding is a major issue in our village, um, but how would this? Uh, how bad is the sand and residue buildup inside the tank?
Um, this I believe I do not know. But knowing that this project has appeared on the agenda is probably a sign that it's getting up there.
And how, what's the usual time between cleanings and maintenance of these tanks?
Four to five years.
Is there any chance we can wait a few more years until we clean it next?
Uh, not without more frequent street flooding.
How does so much sand um, get into the tank and is there any way to like stop it from entering it?
Um, sand enters the tank through um, uh, washing debris from say, it starts raining out. And then um, sand and dirt from both the lake and um, the fields. Or say the high crest, the field near High Crest. They end up in these sewers, which um, no, in flooding situations, they end up in this tank and then when um, when the rain is done, we could open up the backwash pumps to pump the water out. But the dirt still gets stuck in there.
Trustees, any more questions? Uh, well, you may have a seat. Thank you very much. Alright. So that is all of our capital improvement projects. So trustees, it is now open to discussion for all of our village plans. Um, would someone like to start? No? Okay. Well, first of all, let's start with the electric vehicle charging station. Trustee Hatton, what are your views on that?
Is it necessary to have a vehicle station if there's only to, or if it only could charge two considering how much vehicles we have in Wilmatt?
Uh, well, we don't exactly know the number of vehicles in Wilmatt, so that makes it a um, big questionable factor. Uh, does anyone have?
Um, how many more people would this electric charging station really draw into the village center? Um, to shop around?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that a significant amount of number that we would uh, want to invest for? Or is it not enough that it would?
Yeah, we also have to take into consideration that we only have two hundred sixty thousand dollar budget. And with an eighteen thousand dollar project with a lot of questionable factors in it, uh, we will see um, if it will be worth, uh, if it's worth it. So, does anyone have any more comments now? Okay, moving on to the sanitary flow meters, which is a sixty-four thousand dollar project. Someone wanna start? Uh, Trustee Stumpf, would you have something to say?
Um, I mean, I think it's important to know what the sanitary flow is so that we can better understand how our sewer systems are holding up.
Yeah, I agree. Um, considering we don't have any uh, current in-place systems that track or measure any of our um, sanitary flow mea- flow stat, statistics. And considering how big uh, water management is in our village, I think this is a very um, important issue or project.
I disagree. I don't think it is very urgent and at a price of sixty-four thousand dollars. I think that it could wait until future times and there's certainly some other projects that I believe are more urgent and would help the village more.
I agree with uh, Trustee Moran. Uh, we haven't had a system in place before. And we seem to be faring alright without one. Um, I also feel that there are more urgent uh, and calling matters on the table right now. Um, and this might be able to wait for a few more years.
Alright, is everyone, okay, moving on to the Plaza de Lago RFBs, which are the pedestrian crossing. Trustee Norton, would you uh, mind starting us off with your views?
Sure. Um, I was wondering if this would help Plaza de Lago's sales if people use this crosswalk often to like ensure that it's safer to go there?
Well, I just think that uh, at a cost of thirty thousand dollars, this proposal where it's not a hundred percent necessary for the time being. And um, with, it does get a lot of traffic considering its location. But we have to take into consideration also another, which is a pro of um, passing this, approving this plan, is that it's a um, surrounded by a lot of new apartment buildings. So it is um, would be very well-used. But then another negative about this plan is that there are other crossing stations just south, uh, just up the road.
I feel that there are probably enough crosswalks nearby, although it may be a walk for some of the residents. Um, it may not be absolutely necessary at this time uh, to have an additional crosswalk there. And it might just slow down traffic uh, through Sheridan.
Yes, I agree. I do not think that the inconvenience of some people is worth thirty thousand dollars, especially, like you said, when there are other crosswalks.
Trustee Hatton, would you like to add something?
She.
Trustee Norton, you're good?
I agree with um, what um, Ella said, Trustee McCurdy.
Yeah, I also agree. I think that um, especially since there has been, been any recent accidents in the area, I don't think it's necessary for the safety of the citizens.
Yeah.
Okay.
While there have been, sorry, while there have been close calls, um, there again are still crosswalks.
Okay, um, moving on to the server for the in-car new camera system, what are our views?
I think it would greatly help our uh, system, but I don't think it's necessary. I think it could wait a few more years.
Um, I actually would disagree with that point. I think this car system, as um, our uh, police chief has said, will help measure performance and safety of the village. And I believe that one of our main roles as the board is to provide safety for um, citizens in the village of Wilmatt. So if we do invest and approve this project, I believe we do have a safer community due to the more constant checking up on our police system.
I just don't think that this would help our citizens as much as some of the other projects.
I disagree because we need better or newer cameras for in-car safety to help like better our community and, yeah.
Um, I disagree because I feel that um, while there are some projects on the table that are not as necessary, um, I feel that just anything that can be used to improve safety um, and directly improve the lives of citizens is a worthy investment.
Uh, so moving on to the next-gen nine-one-one upgrade, uh, which is also about safety. Our, what are, what are we thinking?
I agree with this, um, because if someone is in a situation where they're not able to like speak, if they have to call nine-one-one, texting would be a good option.
I think this would save many people be, uh, like she said, if they don't have the opportunity to call.
Do we have anyone who disagrees with this plan? Oh, okay. Uh, moving on to our council chambers, um, replacement video system and audio. Starting off, would anyone?
I feel we, we obviously would have to uh, replace this system eventually. But it might not be the absolute most important thing on the table. Because um, again, something like safety of our citizens, um, and just the overall well-being, um, I would say is far more important than um, a film system for a few views depending on the meeting.
I agree and I believe that um, it would be more efficient and effective to replace the system. Um, if it does break down, we could just replace the entire system then. And instead of just like buying more parts and having it break down. But I think it can last um, a fair amount of time before it breaks down again.
Perfect. Uh, moving on to the telephone system replacement. Aiden, um, Trustee Hatton, would you like to start off?
Um, I don't believe it's necessary. From what I know, it's just landlines. We're, um, we're not sure about it. But if it's just landlines, most calls like current day are on your cellular device. So it'd be just more efficient and just like keep the landline system where it is right now. And if it helps cellular, then maybe yes, just depending on its condition.
Does anyone think that this is a high up on our list?
I do not believe this is high up on our list, but I do believe that this would greatly help many people be able to reach uh, our village.
Okay. Um, our eighth, our eighth plan was our comprehensive plan. Uh,
Wait, I have a question.
Yes.
So this, the money spent on this plan would just be to write the plan, not to actually do anything?
Uh, can we actually call up on our community developer to answer that question, please?
Uh, the money spent on this project is only to create the plan, not to actually do anything with the plan?
Creating the plan is doing something about the plan.
Yeah, but it's, okay.
By creating the plan, you're putting in place a series of actions that will better our community in the future. And then you could carry out the actions once you have them.
And just a follow-up question, this is just not specific, specis- specified on certain parts of our village. It's just the general will, welfare and well-being? Yes, okay. Alright, thank you. That's all for now. Um, anyone add?
I feel like this project will be necessary, but it does come with a hefty price tag. Um, and with this money, we're just writing up the plan. We're uh, to do something in the future. We're not actually immediately doing something about it. Um, which even though um, the price tag um, encases um, prices yearly, I still don't think it will, I think it could be put off for a few more years.
Um, just closing comments on this one. I just think that with our young population, due to our great uh, education system with attracting the new families, um, we need to keep them, we need to keep them coming in and we need to keep them here. So if we do invest in this comprehensive plan, hopefully it will um, add a great value to our village. That will keep families here. Uh, moving on to number nine, which is the High Lift Pumps Water Management. Does anyone think that, yes or no?
Um, I believe this is necessary. Um, and it is a, a similar point uh, to where the nine-one-one systems, um, and the in-car uh, film systems are. Um, that it is directly improving uh, the lives and well-being of residents of Wilmatt. And if we don't, it could have substantial negative effects against them.
Anyone disagree with that claim? No? Okay. Uh, the last one is our tank ma- ment- excuse me, maintenance project. Anyone's views?
I think this is very important because um, flooding can be a pretty big issue throughout Wilmatt. And I think it's important to do our best to prevent it.
Go ahead.
I agree, like President Sohegan said before, we want the families to come and keep here instead of come here and just decide go somewhere else. Because we have a few flooding issues and like basements flooding, things like that.
Okay, well, um, if there's no more comments on any of our proposals, can I have a motion to vote to approve our capital improvement projects?
I move to approve the vote of the capital improvement projects.
Can we have a second?
I second that.
Perfect. Um, keep in mind, we only have two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to spend. Um, so let's first vote on our electric vehicle charging station, which is eighteen thousand. Trustee Hat- Trustee Hatton?
No.
Nay. Trustee Stumpf?
Uh, nay.
Trustee Mer-
Aye.
Uh, um, Trustee Norton?
Nay.
Trustee McGrath?
Nay.
Uh, nay. So, count.
It's one, two, five.
So, we have failed to reach a majority, so the electric vehicle charging station has not passed. Moving on to our permanent sanitary flow meters. Trustee Hatton?
I, sec- oh, aye.
Trustee Stumpf?
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Moran?
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Nay.
Trustee Norton?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. So, count.
Five to one.
And majority?
In majority.
So, that, um, the permanent sanitary flow meters have passed in a five to one majority. Uh, yes, that is sixty-four thousand, so we now have one hundred ninety-six thousand remaining. Uh, moving on to our Plaza de Lago pedestrian crossing. Trustee Hatton?
Nay.
Trustee Stumpf?
Nay.
Trustee Moran?
Nay.
Uh, Trustee McGrath?
Nay.
Trustee Norton?
Nay.
And nay. So, that has failed. We won't be funding this project. Our in-car camera system for our police, Trustee Hatton?
Aye.
Trustee Stumpf?
Nay.
Trustee Moran?
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Norton?
Nay.
Uh, aye, so. We have a four to two majority, so we will be funding our in cl- our in-car camera system. So, that is, um, that is twenty thousand. So, we have one hundred seventy-six thousand remaining. Um, moving on to our next-gen nine-one-one upgrade. Trustee Hatton?
Aye.
Trustee Stumpf?
Aye.
Trustee Moran?
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Norton?
Aye.
And aye. We have in a six-two-zero majority. Uh, we have approved and we will be funding the nine-one-one. It is twenty-four thousand dollars. So, we are down to one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars remaining. Moving on to our council chambers audio and video replacement. Trustee Hatton?
Nay.
Trustee Stumpf?
Nay.
Trustee Moran?
Nay.
Uh, Trustee McGrath?
Nay.
Trustee Norton?
Nay.
And nay. So, that has lost. Uh, we won't be funding this. The proposal fails. Uh, the next one is our telephone system replacement. Trustee Hatton?
Nay.
Trustee Stumpf?
Aye.
Trustee Moran?
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Norton?
Nay.
I also have nay. So, what's that? So, three to three. That is no majority. We have not passed this project and we won't be funding it. Um, our comprehensive plan. Trustee Hatton?
Nay.
Trustee Stumpf?
Nay.
Trustee Moran?
Nay.
Uh, Trustee McGrath?
Nay.
Trustee Norton?
Nay.
And I'm aye. We have lost one, six to one. We won't be funding this project and the proposal fails. Um, our High Lift Pump System. Trustee Hatton?
Aye.
Trustee Stumpf?
Aye.
Trustee Moran?
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Norton?
Aye.
And I'm aye. That, six-zero? Yes. Six-zero, um, eh, yes, forty thousand. The proposal passes, uh, we will the rebuild High Lift Pumps. So, that was a forty thousand and we are now down to a hundred and twelve thousand. Our last one is our tank maintenance. Trustee Hatton?
Aye.
Trustee Stumpf?
Aye.
Trustee Moran?
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
And Trustee Norton?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Six to zero. That has passed. We will be funding the tank maintenance, forty thousand. So, we have voted affirmative on our, um, we have affir- oh, we have on our sanitary flow meters, our nine-one-one upgrade, our, um, in-car camera system, our High Lift Pumps and our tank maintenance. We have seventy-two thousand dollars remaining and this will be put forward to next year's budget. Now, moving on, um, are there any standing committee reports? No, I presume? Perfect. Uh, let's move on to any new business. Trustees, is there any new bri- business anyone would like to bring up? Nope. Okay. Committees, are there any matters we need to discuss? Perfect. Um, wonderful. Uh, that's all for the agenda holds for us tonight. Uh, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Can I have a second?
I second that.
Perfect. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Trustee Hatton?
Aye.
Trustee Stumpf?
Aye.
Trustee Moran?
Aye.
Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Norton?
Aye.
And aye. This meeting is adjourned.